Ms. Byram, may I have roll call, please?
Yes ma'am. Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Dawson?
Here.
Ms. Harrington?
Here.
Mrs. Quinter?
Here.
Mr. Rickett?
Here.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
May we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Hornick, is there any changes?
No ma'am.
We have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
A second?
A second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Alright, moving on to the consent agenda. Minutes and financial reports.
Madam Chair, I have had an opportunity to review the minutes and financial reports and monthly operating bills, and I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
A second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Monthly operating bills.
Madam Chair, I believe we voted to approve.
The whole thing?
All both, I'm sorry.
Yes, at the same time.
Okay, thank you. Alright, and over to you, Dr. Hornick.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, I'd like to start with Dr. Hottaker and Dr. Wolfre to come forward. And we have a few really important recognitions this evening. And we're gonna start with Judy Renee. And we're gonna bring forward our friends from the, our very good friends, from the Lake of the Woods Lions Club.
Actually, if it's okay with you, we're gonna start with the other one and then do the Lions.
Perfect. And then, after that, so Nick, Mr. Sedano. Okay, so you'll come next, and then Greg, and then Ms. Day Owens, and then you'll come up after, actually, you're coming after, you're gonna do when you have your field trip request. Okay, so we'll handle that then, so, thank you.
Okay, so, good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Hornick, and members of the board. Tonight Judy and I have the honor of recognizing some wonderful people who volunteer their time for our schools and their efforts. And we're gonna start first with Ellen Wessel. Ellen was so gracious as to help us this year with a very time-consuming but important job. Every year, our Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School students in middle school 8th grade, they apply for the 36 slots that we have for that governor's school. And it is a very intense process for applications. And one of the portions of that application are interviews. Each student is interviewed by two people. And this takes two full school days to get through all the applicants, to give them all the time that they deserve to have their interviews, and then they are scored. And this year, I reached out to Ellen and I asked her if she would be willing to help with that, because like I said, it's very important to the students. It's really the first time our students have applied for something that is competitive. And so, it's super important for them. And without hesitation, she, I think, changed her schedule around and came in and spent two full days. She and Ellen Patera were the two interviewers for the candidates this year. So I would just like to say thank you for all that time that you spent doing that. And the kids loved it, I've heard really positive things. And I'm sure you enjoyed it too, because I've done it before, it's very, it's very fun. So thank you Ellen for that time. I didn't know Ellen was over there. So we are also honored to recognize the Lake of the Woods Lions Club for its unwavering and generous support of Orange County Public Schools and the school community. We have several Lions joining us tonight. Richard Unzer, President. Kathy Hicks, First Vice President. Sheila Carney, Second Vice President. Lee Merrill, Treasurer. Jean Schumitz, Past President and Yard Sale Chairperson. And of course, I would be remiss if I did not mention that our very own school board member Sandy Harrington is also a Lake of the Woods Lions Club member. The Lions endeavor to meet the needs of the whole community through their involvement in the wilderness, food pantry, and by providing medical equipment and furniture. Through various initiatives such as vision and hearing screenings, winter coat drives, student meal debt relief, and robotics support, they have significantly contributed to the well-being and educational development of the students. Their dedication extends beyond basic needs, as evidenced by their provision of convocation teacher gift bags, and the annual teacher innovation grants and banquet. Scholarships, mentorship funds, and donations to the STEM bus. These contributions not only enhance the educational experience for students, but also empower our teachers and educators in their important work.
Now I'll just add a few more details. Approximately 55 Lions have supported these efforts, and the club provides about $36,000 in recurring annual funding in addition to a donation of $15,000 for the STEM bus over the past several years. I just wanna share a little bit of the mission statement from the Lions. Lions serve. The Lake of the Woods Lions Club is dedicated to serving our neighbors in Orange County, Virginia. The Lions Club's consistent support and service to others exemplify their values of community engagement and compassion. Their efforts undoubtedly make a profound impact on the lives of Orange County Public School students, teachers, and our broader community. Thank you so much.
Alright. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Hornick, thank you for the opportunity to provide some recognitions to two staff members at Locust Grove Middle School that are essential to the robust programs that we run for children. And firstly, this is Mr. Austin Henderson. Austin, come join me at the front. Mr. Henderson is both an 8th grade math teacher, as well as our athletic director for Locust Grove Middle School. And he goes above and beyond every day to make sure that, one, our children are ready to come to school to learn math, but two, that they have extracurricular activities with which to engage in. Mr. Henderson has no shortage of duties for his athletic director responsibilities. And feel free to correct me if I leave some stuff out. But this includes hiring coaches, overseeing the coaching program, scheduling games, attending all games at home that are evening events, this can be multiple times per week until about 8:00 PM. It involves managing parent concerns, player concerns, coach concerns. His work goes to arranging volunteers for, to run the concessions, to run the gates. It's a massive undertaking, and it's grossly undercompensated. But Mr. Henderson gives his everything, day in and day out, to ensure that the kids have sporting events to attend, and to ensure that the coaches are the best quality coaches, and that they're having their athletic and extracurricular needs met. So, on top of that though, as I said, he is an excellent math teacher, and relates extremely well to all the students in his class. The students are performing exceptionally well this year, we're really proud of you in that regard, and of all the students. But tonight, I wanted to recognize you for the work you do in all of our athletic seasons to make sure that the operation is working smoothly. And I know it's a ton of work, and I wanna thank you publicly and in front of the board for the work that you do, to make sure that Locust Grove Middle School program goes well. Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
In addition, he's been a family parent. His father, which is our wrestling program, 45 wrestlers this year.
Two more pieces. I'm also really proud of the wrestling tournament that you put on for the championship for the middle school level. It was well done, and a lot of work went into that. It went well, so thank you. Ms. Angelo is the second. Nicole Angelo is our bookkeeper at Locust Grove Middle School. And as part of her role as bookkeeper, Nicole, she helps make sure that the money from the athletics is all in a proper place, which keeps us all happy. That's right. But what I wanted to recognize Ms. Angelo for tonight isn't necessarily her bookkeeping work, it's the work that she does every day to make sure that our classrooms are fully covered, and that we have people in front of the children. As we all know, flu season hits hard, especially during the winter months. Staff absenteeism is a challenge, as is finding substitutes. And so substitute, hiring substitutes is something that we've been working on consistently, but we know there's days where there's nobody available. And in those times, we have to figure it out. And Ms. Angelo is instrumental in that. And without complaint, or without any sort of negative word, she comes in every day and knows the routine to get to it, and has processes in place in order to make sure that the classrooms are getting covered. And she has the way about this too, because nobody wants to deliver that news to somebody that, hey, we need to borrow a little bit of your extra time today that you had planned on planning. And so she takes that on and does that with courage, and with a good attitude. And more so, I just wanna thank you for your flexibility, and your willingness to do whatever it takes to make sure that Locust Grove Middle School is operating efficiently, whether that means keeping the books, or keeping, lining substitutes up, or making sure that our classrooms are just generally covered. So thank you Nicole for everything you do. You are a fantastic representative of Orange County School Board.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hornick. It's my pleasure tonight to bring forth another member of my team, Mr. Travis Taylor. Travis, and I bring him at this time because we recognized Mr. Bennett last meeting that we were here, and he was, I told you what he has been working on with our PA systems and our replacement for that. To get to that PA, you have to have the phones be working. And there are 750 phones throughout the district. And Mr. Taylor is responsible for managing those phones and making sure that they work within the system that we're in. So he is coordinating with Brandon, and they're both working together to make those systems work. More importantly, he also, with the phones, the phone system and the PA has come up with a solution for us so that should we ever, God forbid, need to call a code red, it can be done with a single four-digit code. You institute the code, and it will start that announcement for you. That's, and it's started. It keeps repeating, and it goes on and on. So no one has to put themselves in harm, or they can, you know, be with their class. So we're going to be deploying stickers, which he's designed for all of the phones. They'll have that code on there that can be instituted from any classroom, anywhere. And I'm really proud with the initiative that he's taken to keep our children safe here, and to keep our communications lines open and working at all times. Those phones are not a one-and-done. Anytime someone moves a classroom, or we add classrooms, like we did at Gordon Barber, that requires more phones to be added, those have to be onboarded. We get the people set up, and we make sure that all the equipment is working properly. So that's one of his bailiwick's, and I'm really proud and happy to have him doing that, because he takes really great pride in doing it, and understands why it's so important to us. So, thank you Travis. I'd like you to note, the team is here for him, to support him. And that's, that is not at my bidding. That was something they did the last time, and something that they continue to do, because that's the kind of team we have. They come out and support one another, and they're really an exceptional group.
It doesn't, Craig, it doesn't go unnoticed. We see him here, so, thank all you guys as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Congratulations to all of our recipients this evening. Thank you all for being here. And I will pass it back over to you, Madam Chair, thank you.
Alright, moving on to public comment. I'll open the floor for public comment. Ms. Byram, have we had any speakers sign up?
Yes ma'am, we had seven, but one has removed herself. She couldn't be here this evening. So we have six now, and if you like, I'll call them up three at a time.
Perfect.
Okay, so Mr. Gary McFadden, Rebecca Burnett, and Alyssa Waller.
Dr. Hornick and School Board, over the last two years, apart from a few issues which inspired the public to show up en masse, I have observed that both parent and taxpayer attendance at OCPS school board meetings has been low. Other than the time allocated for recognition of students and staff, the number of parents and taxpayers in attendance at school board meetings is usually less than the number of OCPS staff present. One reason is because many are trying to provide meals, prepare children for school, or just keep pace with the demands of jobs and life. As such, the added demands of travel and daily responsibilities make it difficult for many parents and taxpayers to participate. In response to an effort, in response, in an effort to engage more parents and taxpayers into providing input into school board decision-making, I would like to share the results of a recently completed internet survey I conducted relating to budget transparency and the upcoming K through 5 literacy textbooks. 101 Orange County citizens responded to the survey. I'll estimate that could be more than 10 times the number of parents and taxpayers present here tonight. 100% of all respondents expressed that Orange County Public Schools should be fully responsive to public requests to provide full transparency with respect to the OCPS budget. 90% of all respondents did not support the purchase of any K through 5 grade textbooks and teaching aids curricula which support diversity, equity, and inclusion, and social, emotional learning. Of special note, 15 out of 16 parents oppose curricula supporting DEI and SEL. I'm respectfully requesting two actions from our elected school board. First, tonight's meeting agenda calls for Dr. Hornick to present the FY 24-25 budget. Before shipping this budget over to the Orange County Board of Supervisors, I implore the school board to allow the public a reasonable time to analyze, and where appropriate, seek clarifications from OCPS on proposed expense budget line items. Secondly, as to the matter of textbook procurement, as Dr. Hornick correctly points out, and I quote, "The primary goal of the OCPS textbook acquisition is to determine which materials are the best with respect to instructional and educational values. We may find we dislike the cheapest vendor or materials because the vendor includes contents or themes which we find objectionable, and choose a different vendor." Dr. Hornick's guidance hits the mark.
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Rebecca Burnett, and I am an Orange Elementary, Prospect Heights, and Orange County High School alum. I've had several family members work for our schools over the years, and each of them wore different hats. I have taken on a completely different hat than any of them, and have spent 14 years dedicated to our community's mental health, which is what brings me here tonight. I am the student support coach at Locust Grove Middle, and I also work with the Alternative Education Program there. Student support coaching is a part of the ESER grant that ends soon. I'm here to implore you to recognize the needs to continue in-house mental health support. I sent you a letter a few weeks ago citing statistics from Mental Health America raking Virginia's 48 out of 51 in youth mental health. That is a devastating statistic, and Virginia lawmakers like Governor Yonkin are taking notice. And you are taking notice too. At last week's school board meeting alone, you spent time discussing the physical safety measures for our buildings, and hiring of a crisis counselor to be on call for the county. This is literally a matter of life and death, and that is not hyperbole. I also implore you to think of the position not only for the benefit of our students and their families, but for the employees as well. OCPS currently has an initiative to be competitive with other counties in regards to salaries and retention. We need to stay competitive in what supports we offer as well, because employees stay where they feel supported. Let me utilize my training and certification as a QMHP to support mental health so that teachers can utilize their trainings to help with academics. Allow me the opportunity to intervene with students before it requires administrative attention and potentially time out of school. Use my time to collaborate with medical professionals, probation officers, outpatient counselors, and more. Take those duties off of someone else's already too full plate. If we do not spend time and resources on preventative measures, you will spend it reactively and likely in a more costly way. Sometime this week, check out waitlists for counseling services. They are weeks long, and at this point, a month is considered short. They are dependent on insurance and often place a financial burden on our families due to co-pays and the time off from work to attend appointments. The reality is, services fall through the cracks because families are jumping through too many hoops. Student support coaching eliminates those hoops and provides real-time support. I am aware that people in this room fear the ESER cliff, and I'm here to remind you that the ESER cliff is a mere bump in the road compared to the looming mental health crisis our community is facing. Now is the time to keep the mental health team that you have with plans to add more in the future so our ratio is one-to-one student support coach to school. Do not wait for another grant that may or may not come, allow to force your hand, or to wait until tragedy strikes. Be proactive. Again, thank you for letting me speak tonight, and please get in touch with me about questions or concerns about what we can do together to support mental health in our community.
Good evening, Orange County School Board Chair and all in attendance. As you might remember, I had to wing my speech last month for Black History Month, but this time, I'm better prepared for Women's History Month. I'd like to mention a few tonight. Sally Hemmings had at least six children fathered by her owner, Thomas Jefferson. She left no written records of her life, therefore details are extracted from plantation records, descendant stories, and most importantly, recollections written by her son, Madison. Hemmings' relationships with Jefferson are believed to have begun when she was between the ages of 14 and 16 during Jefferson's term as minister to France in Paris. Hemmings was legally free servant and refused to return to Monticello once Jefferson's term ended in 1789. She returned only after negotiating freedom for their unborn children, and decades later, Jefferson freed all of the Hemmings' children once they reached age of 21 years of age. Jefferson did not grant freedom to any other enslaved family unit. You can learn more by visiting the Life of Sally Hemmings Room at Monticello, illuminated a life of one of the most famous and least understood black women in US history. UVA School of Medicine alumni, Dr. Vivian Penn, the first full-time Director of Office of Research on Women's Health at the National Institute of Health. Vivian Winona Penn was born in 1941 on a farm in Halifax, Virginia. She attended segregated schools in Lynchburg from the age of four. Penn was interested in medical career, especially since she assisted both sets of her grandparents with their health concerns, including some insulin injections, and observed the relief they experienced after a doctor visit. The daughter and granddaughter of teachers, Penn's family encouraged her to study hard so that she could reach her goals. Penn graduated from high school as valedictorian of her class. In 1967, Penn earned a medical degree from the University of Virginia School of Medicine, where she was the only woman and only African-American student in her class. In 2005, Penn delivered the keynote address at the University of Virginia 176 commencement exercises, becoming the first African-American female ever to do so. She recalled, "The challenges to my own sanity and passion for my medical studies during the sociopolitical era of the 1960s." She told the nearly 5,000 graduates accompanied by some 25,000 family members and guests, "I learned then, and have confirmed as years go by, that we can either dwell in the smallness of slights or difficulties, or rejoice in the larger meanings of life's experiences, and build a positive constructive and worldly view of barriers we have faced, and the satisfaction of having overcome them. Don't let difficulties make you small, a complaining specter of life, but rather, let a vision of your own life make you great, a vital participant in life." I have more, but unfortunately, I've ran out of time, so thank you. But always remember, well-behaved women seldom make history.
And our next three speakers are Emily Potts, Laura Daniel, and Terry Pace.
Hi y'all. Dr. Hornick, school board members. So, I wanna come to you today and talk about a few things that have happened in the last couple of months that have been kinda in my heart. First off, I wanna say that thankfully, our House and Senate in this state First off, I want to say that thankfully, our House and Senate in this state changed the wording for the victim of bullying. It was House Bill 536. Go look at it. It covers all types of people: racial, gender, gender identity, and the LGBTQ community that everybody has a problem with. Well, the reason I bring this up is because there's been a lot of it happening in Orange County, and on September 7th of 2024, less than a month ago, a non-binary youth named Next Benedict in Oklahoma was murdered by result of bullying. Nothing was done about it, and their laws and their school system does nothing about it. I'm asking you right now to keep that out of, out of Orange County schools. Keep it so that when a kid is bullied, we do something about it. Don't let a kid die in this area. It's not worth it. And I want to say, the other thing I wanted to say is thank you for not accepting the governor's model policies on trans youth, because we would be part of, Orange County would be part of the lawsuit that the ACLU has brought against two different counties, and I don't think we want that. I really don't think we want to be in court for something that, you know, that we don't need to deal with. The kids are here, and somebody just said it a little while ago about mental, mental health. Mental health is a big thing, and if you don't, it, help them get what they need in the schools for the mental health for the kids, because it is hard to, it is very hard to pay an extra $200 because something happened and there's nobody in the school system to do it. I know my time's up, but, you know, think about that.
I stand before you because first I want to talk about Next Benedict. I'm standing before you for her or for them, and for all the LGBTQ plus community, especially in our community, because you sitting up there as board members may have your own personal views, and they are your personal views, but when you sit up there, you are supposed to be nonpartisan, non-biased members, representing, looking out for the best of all community. Whether you agree with their upbringing, or their beliefs, or religion, or anything else, you are to look out for the best for them. So on behalf of all of the LGBTQ plus community, they exist in your community, they exist in our school systems whether you want them to or not, and they deserve to be protected, and they deserve to be heard, and they deserve not to be marginalized. Which leads me to my second thing that I wanted to talk about: discipline. Discipline in our schools. Yes, the superintendent created a nice 50-plus-page document with Ms. Ailer, I think. They, I'm sure they worked, spent hours on creating this 50-plus-page document at the beginning of the school year that you guys adopted for discipline, but clearly, more needs to be done, and we need to address it. And these issues are all intertwined. It deals with mental health, it deals with marginalizing community members in our community, it deals with, you know, just everything, you know, learning loss, being marginalized, everything, they're all connected. So we need to do more, because when you have a kid that's been sent to in-school suspension 22 times at the start of the school year, and it was even before month into the school, something's going on. If you have teachers saying that kids are purposely asking to be sent to ISS, then something's going wrong. We need to address it. All right. Which, before I move on to my last thing, and I need to hurry up and say this, I knew about your survey. What your survey says does not speak for the entire community. I didn't fill it out. We try to come to meetings. I know we've missed a couple because of, due to family emergencies, but we show up, and we're active, and we try to make sure that all voices in our community are heard versus being marginalized. Lastly, because I wanted to end this on a positive note before people tried to distract for that, is I do want to take a moment to thank the progress that is being made. Thank you, Dr. Hornick. Thank you for the staff members that are advancing. I have heard through the grapevine that there are going to be more advanced math classes offered to our kids. That is wonderful. I have heard that there are even more DE classes available at the high school than there were two years ago. That is wonderful. We are slowly making progress, and gosh, is it slowly. But all of our kids have the potential to do the best and be the best. All of our kids have the potential to go to Harvard. We should see that. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We look forward to a school board that seeks excellence in education, and that is providing opportunity for Orange County students. And that can only be attained with good teachers, challenging academics that meet students on their level, discipline, accountability, and parent involvement. And choosing the correct, the right curriculum is paramount to achieving this goal. And I hope that the new board will get off to a strong start by choosing Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts for K through five. I don't know when the education system got to be this social experiment. Children are to come to school, know what the rules are, abide by them, or there are consequences, and they're supposed to be enriched with knowledge and truth. That's what education is. And not catering to the child's emotional needs, because those need to be taken care of at home, because that's where you fill your emotional needs. And if there's a problem, then the home will seek elsewhere, and if there's abuse, then that is the job of educators to report that abuse to social services. But we miss giving our kids opportunities when we try to fill all the holes, because that's not what an education is about. The education is about academics so that the kids have tools when they graduate to be successful, and also to offer extracurricular activities that are athletic, or art, or music, or civic, but the, you're not going to fix the emotional needs of a child, they have to be fixed by their parents who nurture them. And if there's structure in the school where the kids can get those tools to advance themselves in the direction that they want to go and the energy that they want to expend, but when we try to just mix everything, it's just a glop, and no one, no one advances. So I hope we have a board that will stay focused on all children's needs to have tools when they graduate to advance themselves and their desires. Thank you. All right. There's nobody else, I will close public comment. All right. And over to you, Dr. Hornick.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're going to start this evening in action items, and I'm going to bring Ms. Day Owens forward, and, and Ms. Brooks, Donna, good to see you as well. So, you are for, to talk about two things. One is a out-of-state or overnight field trip request, and then I believe we have some other information and somebody to recognize, so I will turn it over to you all.
Everybody got back, all the legs and toes and fingers are all there. We're a little tired, but we had a good time. Unfortunately, nobody qualified. We had two teams that were close, but as I told you last month, they were really green. We only had four members of the, four students of the 30-something students that we had who had been in DECA before, who had went to competition at that level and kind of knew the pressures and emotions and the stamina that they would need at the state level. I remember waking up Saturday after we went to sleep about, what, 3 o'clock a.m., and Ms. Brooks looked at me and she said, "Do you think they realize yet?" And I said, "Well, if they haven't, they're about to find out." They complained about how they had to dress, and how much we were making them study, and how they had to write, and then they got there, and they realized, "Oh, everybody here is great, and everybody here is dressed up, and everybody here is the best of their school." And it was a slap in the face, I think, to our students because they just hadn't realized. They, they might be the best in Orange, but they're not always the best in Virginia, and they might not always be the best in the world, which they will find out hopefully if you approve this. But we had a good time, and we really got to expose students to leadership and what the world would be like when they leave Orange, because I believe all our students will advance and leave, and some of them will come back. I have a, we had three parents that were at states this weekend as judges. We had a biology teacher that is now, one student called it, what, what'd they say? Big DECA Church? Big DECA Church. It's a new hashtag now, and so she text us when she got back, and she said hashtag Big DECA Church. So she has drunk the Kool-Aid, and that all, that also helps when we're trying to get students out of classes, because not all our students are with us for the whole year, and so we're scrambling to like talk to them during the year. But I wanted to read an email that a parent wrote, Ms. Shannon Smith. She couldn't be here tonight, but she wanted me to read it to the board. "Good afternoon." To begin with a little background, all three of my sons, I'm going to slap these glasses real quick, I don't know who I thought I was. "All three of my sons have come up through the OCSS since kindergarten. My youngest is currently a junior at the high school. They have all been active in different sports, clubs, and activities while in school. I recently was given the privilege to serve as a judge at the DECA State Leadership Conference in Virginia Beach this past weekend. It was my first experience with DECA, and to say that I was blown away would be an understatement. I was able to witness 4,300 students come together with the purpose of becoming better leaders and citizens in our community. While I was judging, student after student came to my booth with an appropriate amount of nerves, but also with a drive to succeed that was such a refreshing approach from teens. I was immensely impressed with our own group from OCHS to have students that are taking pride in how they appear and speak to others. To understand the importance of eye contact, composure, and what a good handshake can tell a person about you. To be articulate, a good sport, and kind to others. To understand that the world is full of people that are great at what they do, and if you want to succeed in the real world, they will have to work harder than the next, and be accountable for their actions and not make excuses for their shortfalls. But to look at the opportunities for growth, this is absolutely what DECA is instilling in our teens. I will be remiss in this letter if I did not also mention their advisors, Ms. Patri Day Owens and Ms. Donna Brooks. Their love and dedication to our students and the DECA program are beyond reproach. I know for a fact that as of today, they have worked 15 days straight. I have received emails from them over the past few weeks in preparation for the conference late at night and early in the morning. The amount of attention to detail and organization that they have put into this work made the trip seamless for the rest of us and did everything they could to prepare our students. I cannot thank them enough, and I hope that they are deeply appreciated, appreciated by the board and all of the parents in our school system. OCHS is very lucky to have them. To close, I am very sorry I could not attend the meeting in person this evening. I have a standing commitment on Monday nights that I was not able to change. However, I hope that this letter will encourage you all to please do what you can to support DECA programs and its advisors. It would be a terrible oversight to not make it a priority. Quite frankly, after experiencing firsthand how it is building up our teens into leaders, our future literally depends on it. Thank you for your time, Shannon Smith." I went around yesterday, even after, it was kind of like losing a basketball tournament at the state level. Of course, the players are a little disappointed, but I went around while we were eating lunch, and I asked every single one of them individually, "How would you rate your trip?" Overall, it was an average of about an 8.5. And I said, "Would you compete again?" And they all said yes, because they realized that although I didn't make the play this time, I got a whole year to get myself together and make the best play the next year. And that's what we want from our students. We want them to be good sportsmen and know that I did well, but I got to grow my game to the next level in order to compete. We won two things. We won everything that we put in for the chapter. So we won the store, we won a plaque for the store, we are gold certified again, and we also won a trophy for being one of the best chapters in Virginia. I am going to let Ms. Donna Brooks introduce our friend of DECA. Only 26 people in the whole state got this award out of all the high schools, and we're proud that Mr. Emmett Ailer, somebody else who came back after they went to college, was accepted for this award.
Since becoming a member of Orange County High School DECA in 2014, during his junior year, Emmett Ailer has been a pillar to the chapter. As a student, he has always wanted to be in business when DECA started in his junior year. He was instrumental in sharing advisors, officers, members knew how the chapter could navigate the world of DECA for the maximum of success. After graduating from Orange County High School, Emmett has remained a crucial part of a chapter's success. He attended officer meetings, helped prepare members for competitions at the district, state, and international levels. During COVID, at, sorry, during COVID, Emmett was a valuable assistance to prepare a program of work aid for students to present to the superintendent and the staff, as well as for the principal, who was, was most valuable in help to keep OCHS chapter viable during the virtual world. Emmett used his marketing knowledge, skills, abilities to help streamline our social media sites in a tremendous, tremendous undertaking, sorry. His leadership and his real-world experience have kept one of the greatest assets. Emmett Ailer is a valuable member of our OCHS community, a hard-working DECA alum, because we love DECA alums around here, and will always be a member and a friend of DECA. So thank you, Emmett, for your continued support, and knowing that you were not on the state level to get this award, we wanted to show the community how proud and thankful that we are to have you as a friend of DECA. Thank you.
Okay, now back to trying to prove our trip. Although we did not have any qualifiers, we do have two qualifiers for the store. Once you get gold certified, you are automatically entered into state and international competition. We also earned four seats along with this trophy, and we applied for five additional invitations to international competition. This is my 10th year, and I forgot that until they gave me a 10-year DECA pin, and I was like, Donna, what is... like, "Donae, what is this?" And I was like, "Oh, it's been 10 years, Lord." I know that our students have to see the bigger world, and so even though they didn't win, we need to produce leaders for our chapter, and we also need for them to come back knowing that the chapter at this level is not the big picture. At states with 4,300 students, it's not the big picture. Being at an international competition with seven countries and 50 states with 20,000-plus students, that's the big picture. That's the big goal. And until they see that, I know Emmett saw that the first year that we were in DECA, and although we really wanted him to be on the stage, because he's never been on the stage before, and he couldn't come Friday, he understood how important it was once he saw what it was like at international. I remember in 2015, he said, "I have never seen something like this in my life." And I knew then in 2015 that it's important for us to take students to international competition, whether they compete or not, so that they can see the bigger picture. So Ms. Donae, I are asking that you approve this trip. We do not know who is going yet. We have about 12 students who want to go and only about 10 spots, so we will see how that works out.
Thank you, ladies. Madam Chair, we'll turn it over to you all for consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the overnight and out-of-state field trip request for the DECA program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Next, we have Ms. Laura is here, and we brought you last week, I believe it was, approval of the Head Start and Early Head Start Continuation Grant, and Ms. Laura had a presentation, and we're following up this evening for action.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board, and Dr. Hornick, thank you for having me back this week. I'm seeking approval on our $1,737,738 grant from the Office of Head Start. It is a federal grant, and that includes the non-federal share. Next page, please. Next slide, please. We have 146 students in Head Start only, in Early Head Start, Head Start only. Most of our monies go towards personnel and fringe benefits. As you can see, that's quite expensive and goes up every year, and we are trying not to pass that on to our staff, just as the public school system is trying to do that. We have money in there for our supplies, medical classroom supplies, other supplies. It's a little less than it was last year, but we feel like we can make that work definitely. We can stretch a dollar in Head Start. And then we have some, the contractual that is for mental health, behavioral health, outside contracts with local businesses that we contract with. Any questions?
Go ahead.
Yes, I was actually wondering, it said we have a 20% in-kind services or match, and I was wondering how much of that is in-kind and what type of services do people come and help with?
We get a lot of donations from local churches. We get, we work with the Literacy Council of Orange at some point, they donate to us. Mostly, our in-kind is mostly donations. Now, what I have not included is if Orange County Public Schools were to charge us rent, lights, water, that's all above and beyond that they do. But most of our donations are from outside businesses. But the school does 25% easily.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I would just move to approve the submission of the Early Head Start and Early Head Start Continuation Grant, as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And last this evening for approval is the recommendation for the renewal of both the Chiller and the Drive for Locust Grove Middle Schools. Chiller number one, extending the life of this piece of equipment, and we are seeking your approval this evening, please. And Mr. Arnold is here if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any additional questions from last week, I guess it was?
Yeah, we pretty well addressed it, but I'm here if you need.
No questions. Madam Chair, I move to approve the renewal of the compressor and drive for the LGMS Chiller number one by train in the amount of $193,820.
I'll second that.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you, Doug. We have one report this evening, and I won't spend a lot of time on it, but we have a memorandum of understanding between the public schools and the sheriff's office, and the last one was signed, I believe it was December of '22. So we're still well within, it has to be reviewed every two years. But with the onboarding and the election of our new sheriff, Sheriff Smith, we thought it would be a good idea at this point in time to go back and to review and update and edit the document as necessary. And so this document will be, we are required by code to provide the public opportunity to give feedback and input, and so much like many of the other surveys we have run with very good success, we will post this to our website and have a very simple, one-prompt Google Form survey that will ask folks to provide their feedback to us. And based on feedback from the board, essentially, we have a change within the appendix highlighting a link directly to our student code of conduct. We're proud of this document. The major addition, so to speak, the sheriff added, and the sheriff's offices, Sheriff Smith and Captain Seal, added some language clarifying our use of the Handle with Care Notification Program, which is essentially if a, an Orange County deputy responds to a situation somewhere in the community, and they learn that somehow that situation, either a student of ours was involved, or was in the periphery, or was their family member, they simply contact the SRO as well as the building administrator. Obviously, they're not giving us details of said situation, but they're letting us know that there was an incident that happened overnight over the weekend, and it would be prudent to handle the student with care. And that is a very good reminder for our adults that engage with these students to be judicious about how they approach that particular student. The sheriff's office also added some additional language with respect to searches, and in particular, the use of canines, police canines in searches. And the other one is our unmanned aerial vehicles, drones, if you will. So that language has been added in. The current MOU is posted on our website under our Safe and Supportive Schools tab, so it's easily comparable to this document, but those three areas highlight the major changes. And our, my goal and plan is to put this out for public input beginning tomorrow, and that way we can come back to you all at the work session here in March, I believe it's the 25th, and seek, and let you know and seek your approval to enter back into this MOU and move forward with the sheriff's office. So this is just an update this evening, so.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Dr. Hornick, are you going to be having this sent out to staff and parents alike to get feedback on whoever has email addresses registered?
It will be, it's going to be sent to all of our community members tied to Orange County Public Schools. So it'll be parents, parents and staff, and it's going to be on the website as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions?
Okay. Thank you all very much, and moving forward, I will have Mr. Honnicker come forward as well.
Five-minute break?
Yes, that sounds like a good idea.
Five-minute break, please.
Dr. Horne.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Now, we'll bring Mr. Honnaker forward. And we are very happy this evening to bring our superintendent's proposed budget to the Board. And so Laura, let's go ahead and move forward. We're going to start with some information about personnel. Okay. So, we, let's start with some information about some of our folks that are currently covered in ESTER funding. And we are very much in need of their continued employment. And that includes 13 instructional assistants in special education. I think you heard a very eloquent explanation for the need for our continuation of our student support coaches. And I'll remind the Board, particularly the members who were here last year, this was the group that we were very much trying to get out of ESTER funding and get to the operating side in the FY '24 budget. In fact, it was those four positions, as well as our technology support specialist, who works and serves our high school. That's quite a bit of need at our high school. I know she helps other schools as well, but that's her primary area of responsibility. We also have some, unfortunately, we have some 6B federal funding that is winding down. And we don't have the amount carrying forward that we have had in the past. And so, there is a special education teacher, as well as five and a half instructional assistant positions. Again, these are, we have them in our buildings. They are currently employed, they are currently filled. They are not hitting the operating fund because we have been finding creative ways to use federal dollars. Unfortunately, those federal dollars no longer exist. However, our needs still exist. As far as some new positions, the first two here, these are both for self-contained special education programming. And of course, the instructional assistants that need to support these classes are inside of those 13 that are currently ESTER funded. They, you know, they would, we would move them around to cover the areas that we need to cover. And so, our numbers absolutely dictate an additional self-contained special education program at Locust Grove Primary School, and a self-contained special education program at Gordon Barber Elementary School. Currently, the students who are zoned for Gordon Barber are transported to Orange Elementary School. However, the number of students coming up that are zoned for Orange Elementary School, plus the students that are coming up zoned for Gordon Barber, put additional pressure as far as numbers on our special education programming. And so, our goal would be to have the students who currently go to Orange Elementary School, stay at their base school, and join the students who are coming up from our Head Start programming, our pre-K programming, to have a program at Gordon Barber. Locust Grove area, as everybody knows, is certainly our fastest-growing portion of the county. Last year, we added two positions at Locust Grove Middle School. We hired a math teacher and an elective teacher inside of Family and Consumer Sciences. This year, it would really be great for us to add a social studies, a science, and a language arts teacher to join our math teacher, to find, to round out another team of core teachers, to bring down the class, the student-to-teacher ratio at Locust Grove Middle School. A very good problem to have at Unionville, we need to add a first-grade teacher. Our kindergarten class is very large. And generally, what we have been able to do when you have a large class is, as they move to the next grade, the group coming behind them is a little bit smaller and you can kind of switch a teacher. Well, that's not the case at Unionville. The current kindergarten that's moving to first grade is every bit as big as the incoming kindergarten class. And so, we need an additional staff member at Unionville to ensure that we keep our student-teacher ratio, as well as our, Judy, what's the name of the, you had our class size reduction?
Yes.
Our class size reduction funding as well. So, we do not want to lose that funding. And so, in order to maintain that, we need a first-grade teacher at Unionville. First, a third-grade teacher at Locust Grove Elementary School and at Orange County High School. We are going to begin our process of adding CTE programming. We want to start inside of the Building Trades Construction Carpentry. And we would like to create that position, as well as the creation of a true instructional technology resource position that stands alone, that can assist our testing coordinator during high testing time, and also serve as an instructional coach and mentor to our new teachers when we are not in the throes of testing. So, again, you can notice all of these positions are building-level positions that we really do need. If you could go to the next slide, Laura. Also, you all have heard some of these already. We've discussed at length the need at Locust Grove Middle School. In addition to student support coaches, instructional assistants, and teachers, that building is operating with a principal and an assistant principal with 700 students. It would really be judicious if there was an assistant principal position created to round out that workload and make it more appropriate. We truly do need a clinic aide. This person would be, this would be an administrative, it would be a support position. We would look to hire somebody probably likely with CNA credentialing. Hopefully, one of our students that might be finishing or have recently finished the program. And this person would serve and assist inside of the clinic. Approximately 1,500 students is really a tremendous load for one nurse to carry and continue to carry at Orange County High School. Additionally, we'd like to create an administrative assistant position at Orange County High School to help support both our athletic director, as well as our assistant principals. We believe this is very paramount in order to improve and enhance communication, particularly between the administrators and the staff, particularly when it comes to student discipline. We have begun to really take a look at cleaning needs and our custodians. And we have looked at the industry standard, which says that custodians would be, they're, the appropriate amount of space for them to clean is 18,000 to 22,000 square feet. And using those metrics, we feel it's very important to add a custodial position to Orange County High School, as well as a .5 position to Orange Elementary School. We feel those are really important. This next group, we have it on this slide, but I would like to let the Board know that we currently have nine building, permanent building substitute positions that have been funded through ESTER over the last three years. And we are seeking to maintain those nine positions and add four additional for a total of 13, I believe is the math up here. One at each school, two at Locust Grove Middle, based on their size, and three at Orange County High School, based on their size. This evening, being unprompted, with the recognition of Ms. Angelo at Locust Grove Middle School, Mr. Sedano talked very eloquently about the difficulty in staffing and finding folks. And I really believe that in the midst of a hiring crisis, it would not, it would not be a particularly wise decision to start moving away from building subs. These are positions that are absolutely essential. This is a major sticking point when it comes to morale, as well as the culture in the buildings and how teachers are feeling. And we need to be able to preserve as much of their planning time if we really want to truly move instruction and student performance forward. Teachers, our teachers cannot spend all four blocks a day or every part of their day in the classroom and then covering for other people's classrooms. There is never a chance for job-embedded professional development. And so, we feel very strongly that these permanent building substitute positions are not only a wise investment, they're an absolutely necessary investment into our buildings. Some additional budget priorities. Gary has worked hand-in-hand with the county. And the, both of the bodies are anticipating a 5% increase in the overall cost of insurance. And so, as usual, it would be, we very much would like to not pass off that increase to our employees. And you can see the cost. Gary will talk a little bit here in a few moments about, in the revenue section, as far as the projections we are using. Right now, and we do not, still do not have a Calc tool for the House and Senate budget. However, I believe it's the House budget put a 3.375... 3.3 something percent raise for positions. And the Senate budget was a 3% raise. And so, we feel that looking at a 3% salary increase is where Virginia is going to end up. I believe that is what we're going to see. And we really want to give additional increase to our teaching staff. So, that would be a 4% increase for our teachers. And you can see the additional cost. We also have some non-personnel expenses currently covered with ESTER funds. And Judy and Renee are here, they can talk to you about some specifics of learning programs. Justin is here, that can address the ZONAR technology. But, and Justin, you can just correct me from there if I'm wrong. Essentially, this is our GPS monitoring, as well as how we route digitally our buses. So, we don't have to use paper sheets, et cetera. That software, we have had for three years now. And each year, it's been covered with ESTER funding. Again, not passing the cost on to the locality, so to speak. But, that is a service that's very important, not only for safety, as well as routing, but it also is important for our parents. It lets them know exactly where our buses are, as long as the technology is working. And we also have, which is very important, and Greg, you can speak to more about this if Board members have any questions. But, we have backup software to protect our servers and our information and our data that we have had for a number of years that has been covered under ESTER. And again, that funding is no longer available. And as far as other overall increases in funding, this is just simply good, hard work by Gary, keeping an eye on lines and looking at trends over the last number of years to project where we're going. And you can see here where he sees needed increase for teacher training, PD, legal fees, financial software, website, special education, transportation is going up considerably, athletic transportation, language line. This is due very much in large part to our, for our needs for translating appropriately for all members of our community. Increases in funding for homebound and evening alternative ed programming. We are anticipating needing approximately $50,000 for equipment to begin to bring our carpentry and building trades program online. And if, Greg, I think this is a good stopping point. If you'd like to come forward and speak about E-Rate for a moment, and some of the, and the projects we're looking to do from E-Rate. I think that's very crucial information for the Board.
So, E-Rate is a federal funding program that's based on a formula. We receive partial payment for equipment purchased from the federal government based on our free and reduced lunch. Our current free and reduced lunch rate gets us a 70% discount. So, we take projects that we want to get funded, and those can come in two categories. Category one is our internet connection. There's no limit as to how much that costs. They give us 70% off on that. The second category, category two, is everything within the building. Our access points, our switches, our cabling, our fiber between buildings, all of that can be covered under E-Rate funds. And it's funded on a five-year cycle. We're currently going into year four. So, we have two remaining years to apply for and utilize the funds. And we have approximately $500,000 left in E-Rate funds. When you apply, you apply for the non-discounted rate. So, we are looking to apply for approximately $384,000 in funds, of which we would be responsible for $102,000. So, basically, we get $300,000, or almost $400,000, for the cost of $100,000. So, that's the way E-Rate works. It's a very long process. It does have a lot of hoops to jump through and a lot of steps to it. But, we've gone out, we've gotten bids for switches. We'd like to, with these funds, replace the entire switch stack at the high school, as well as the top layer switches at all of the remaining sites. That would give us control over all of our access points and bring them all into a single control panel. Whereas previously, we still have a different manufacturer. So, we're using two different ways to look at our Wi-Fi throughout the buildings. This would give us that single pane that we can look at and manage everything. That would not completely do all of the switches, but we could do the high school, which is probably our biggest user, get that fully replaced, and then do the control switches at the remaining buildings, and then look to finish those out in the coming years.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Gary, I'll turn it over here if you want to talk a little bit about revenues and how you're getting, how we've got to the revenue projections that we have come to despite not having a Calc tool for the House and Senate budgets.
I'll probably start with that, I guess. So, as Dr. Horne mentioned, we have not received a Calc tool for the House and Senate budgets. But, we have received a crossover estimates from both of those. So, what I did, I sat down with Dr. Horne, and we looked at it line by line. And we noticed the lines that were the same as far as an increase was concerned. And in some cases, we went with the average, with the exception of compensation, which I'll go over. But anyway, there was, there was increases on both sides for English as second language funds. The compensation supplement was one that there was, there was a difference. But, what we did was, we went with the Senate version of that, which was less, but it's also at the 3%, which we sort of believe that's where the state will land. So, the House was 819, the Senate was 564,000. So, we went with the 564, again, to be...
Hoping that's worst-case scenario.
Right. At-risk funding increased on both sides. And again, increased by an average of $752,000. So, that's the number we use for the at-risk cost. And the only deduction was the governor's bonus, governor's budget had a bonus in it, which is neither the House nor Senate had in there. So, we, we took that out. But, with those numbers, it was an increase of 1.44313 to the state budget. So, we had 1.1, over 1.1 million that we added to the governor's budget to get to where we're at. So, again, these are all estimates. Again, so, even if we had the Calc tools, they're not, they're going to be different. So, we're still going to have to do, use the same type of, you know, planning to figure out what to use. But, until the General Assembly has a budget, it's all just a, you know, it's all moving parts. So, anyway, that's where we got the numbers. So, just to go over the state revenue with you. First of all, is, this is, this shows the overall state funding in each category. And I will go over each category individually. But, as you can see, the increase in total state funding is over 3, is $3,096,527. So, moving on to the next page, for as far as standards of quality. The big difference here is in basic aid. And basic aid is where we get our funding from SOQ positions. We talk a lot about SOQ positions. But, and the reason you see a significant increase here is, the state gave a 5% increase last year, and then they gave an additional 2% increase in January. So, that, the SO, the basic aid is based off of the salaries and benefits of the SOQ positions. So, that's why you see a nice increase in the basic aid. For all categories of the total SOQ, I won't go through each one. We have a lower of $5 million. Incentive programs, this one, as you can see in the compensation supplement, there's a significant decrease. And that's for the same things I just mentioned. You had a 5% and a 2% that made up that compensation supplement. And this year, we're looking at 3%, which is 564. So, that's a decrease in $1.5 million. Again, at-risk, this is all part of the same thing we spoke about in the previous slide. But, again, it's an increase of $865,000. Two big things here is a grocery hold harmless is a $1 million decrease. And what that is, is that's lost revenue from tax on food. So, when they first came out with that, they said, the state said, "Well, we're not going to hold the schools harmless for that. I mean, we're not going to hold them harmful for that. We're going to give them the funds, but with this year's budget, at this point, that's going away." And the same thing with the benchmarking home harmless. This came from, there was, now I can't think of the name of the company it did. J-Larke. J-Larke report that said that the state was basically underfunding support positions. So, what they did was for, in the last bile, ENEM, they gave us additional money. So, last year was $526,000, but that has ceased as well. So...
Why is that ceased?
That's something that...
It's at state level.
That's correct. Yes. So, again, we don't know whether it'll stay off of there. But, as, at this point, it's, it is. So, in incentive category, it's a loss, it's a decrease of $2.2 million. Again, for the categorical, man, I'm having a hard time. Categorical funding, this is just a small part of a budget anyway. And the two things that go to the operating here are the special education homebound and the special education GELs program. And that's an increase of $21.85. The last category is our lottery-funded programs. And as you can see, there's very little change from 23, 24 to 24, 25 in the lottery programs. There is a slight increase of $235,992,000. So, that is it for state funding. Federal funds, again, the one to note here is a 6B, Part B. That is a special education program that we were speaking of earlier, that we had a decrease of spending in that because we were using previous year's carryover, which has dried up. So, we're down to one year on a 6B grant. So, we had to decrease that by, right at $282,000.
Which is where the teacher position and the 5.5 instructional assistant positions come back in as far as on the operating side.
What was that grant's total? If you don't go off the top of your head, that's fine.
It's, Susan would know that off the top of her head.
A little over 1.1, though.
Yeah.
So, 1.1, and then the ESTER was 10?
Well, all ESTER programs were 12 million, but we... We were down to ESTER 3, which was 5 million. But, I think this year, in last year's budget, if I recall, was right at $3 million that we had in last year's budget left. So, the last category is other revenue. Greg touched on the E-Rate.
Before you go any further, so we drive, so basically, you drive up about 13, 13 and 1/2 million in grants?
Over the period of time, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, great job stretching it out because you're only asking for what? We're only, again, this is just an estimate. We're only asking that. But, we got a decrease in dried-up funds.
That is, that is correct. Yes.
I certainly appreciate that.
Yeah. Again, the first category there you see is E-Rate. And you see the big increase there. Again, that goes back to what Mr. Hill was speaking of. In order to, we had to spend, I believe it was 120, but we are receiving 340 for spending that money. So, the total amount that we're spending for the switches is 44313. But, again, E-Rate is going to reimburse us 340 of that. And then we have to pay, make up the difference, so. So, the last one, I guess, the big one here. So the last one, I guess the big one here is, would be our ask from the county. So from the operating budget, the new ask for the county would be 1.664,439 million.
In your estimate, again, estimates, your estimate, that is the worst-case scenario?
That, in my, in my estimate-
Oh, this is online, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought so.
Yeah. In my estimate, yes. Again, we, we talked about it. We were trying to be conservative when we were looking at the House and the Senate budgets because again, we, we were trying to be cautious there, so I do, I would say yes.
Yeah, thank you.
There is one point about that, Mr. Rickett, though. If, if the budget would come out and let's just say, you know, a 4.5% increase in salary, that, that is still going to be a cost to us, right? Because we have to keep in mind when, when a pay raise is rolled out, we are getting funding for our LCI portion of the SOQ positions. The local appropriating body is on the hook for the remaining portion and then the full portion of any non-SOQ employee. And so there's a really great example of how difficult it is to work within SOQ parameters. So we'll take first, I think it's first, second grade teachers. We receive funding for 14.55 positions in second grade across the county. In order to keep our numbers appropriate and to not have classrooms bursting at the seams and to get class size reduction, we employ 20. Okay? So we get, the state comes out with a pay raise and they're going to give their portion of the SOQ. I don't know how we determine what 14.55 first grade teachers are SOQ and what 4.45 aren't, right? And this is true across all employee categories up to and including central office. There's SOQ money for an assistant superintendent. Okay? So this is why it is very difficult to determine who, who would be the haves and the have-nots on an SOQ basis because it is a formula that spits out a numeric value that doesn't match the number of employees that we truly employ. And so while this is potentially worst-case scenario, if a, if a large pay raise would come out and we would want to make sure that we didn't fall behind, that, while there will be more money, there's still going to be more cost to us for that because you don't get funding for 100% of the pay raise. You get, we get funded for 43%, no, we get funded for 57% of our SOQ positions. We're on the hook for the remaining 43% and change plus 100% for anybody that's outside of the numbers that are in the equation.
That's a great point. Another thing that, to bring up when we were, of course, we wanted to give the teachers an additional 1% there, but also by doing so, if, if they increase that compensation to more than three or, or up to four, we have still had the teachers, which is obviously the bulk of the expense and our salaries, that is already in here. So we could go up to, if they increase it up to four, we're still covered. We'd obviously like to do more than that for our teachers, but we are, we have it budgeted up to 4% for them. So that's a little bit of buffer if, if it comes to fruition, what he was saying, so again. The next page is just the total revenues for all the categories. The only thing I think really haven't touched on, back one, Laura, is the lease proceeds. And again, this is, this is basically an audit entry that we, we have to include on the revenue and expense side for the lease that we're hoping to enter into to get the purchase of the buses. So again, we're, we're valuing at it, at just over a million dollars. So again, the total increase in the revenues is $4.8 million. And again, the next slide was just a chart to show it. As you can see, 57.9% of our funding comes from the state. The county provides 35.8%. The federal government, 4.3. Other is .6, and then the lease proceeds was 1.5. So again, the majority of funding coming from the state and local government. All right, turn it back over to you, Dr. - okay, go ahead, Laura.
All right, so in the next series of charts, we are going to, this is out of basically our, our major functions and the overall percentage of this year's budget. And so this is the chart for instruction that includes classroom guidance, social services, homebound, improvement of instruction, et cetera. And as you see, for the FY '25 budget percentage, 70.3% of the dollars are earmarked for instruction. Next, Laura, I believe we have-
One note on that one before we move on to, you'll see a pretty significant increase in improvement of instruction. That's where those learning programs are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. I believe next is admin, health and attendance.
Your point is, that's where we lost some of the money and then you've had-
Well, it's where it was-
That was in the ESER funds that we moved to local, yes.
Right. So that's where, that's why you see an increase here. Administrative health and attendance expenses. And so including this is all of the board services, executive administrative services, student services, personnel, fiscal, et cetera. Gary, is there a few you want to highlight?
Yeah, I've got a couple here. The first one being executive administrative services. That was where the attorney fees, we added additional attorney fees. And then under health services, there's a significant increase there. That is our student support coaches.
Okay, so again, that is an increase requisite to no longer having the ESER funding for student support coaches. And that's under health services, correct, Gary?
That is correct, yes.
And where do you have that? Do you have it under health?
Under health services.
Okay, health, I see it, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, Laura. Next, we're going to have transportation. We have some increases here, Gary, if you want to speak to those.
But these are all pretty just, just normal things. I don't think there's anything in, in particular here other than we have, this is, I want to make sure, yes, this is the one that has a ZONAR in it, so you're going to see an increase in that particular area. That would be in the last section.
And ZONAR is the GPS-
The GPS is-
Routing software that is currently in ESER 3 funding.
Correct, yes.
Okay, Laura, I believe next is technology or is it maintenance? Maintenance is next? Okay? Hey, you want to talk about security services, Gary?
Yeah, I'll talk about a couple here. The first one is in, under building services. Again, you'll see higher than normal increase there, and that's due to the one and a half custodians that were new employees that we're hiring. And then security services, there's a significant increase there. And one thing is, we've, we added a security officer after last year's budget-
At the high school.
At the high school. So that's one. And then in addition to that, the cost of just the, the security services for, again, as wages go up for our service department and those guys, then we, they, that cost goes up for us well. But we've also increased our security at, at ballgames and things like that. So that's where you're seeing a significant increase in the security service.
Okay, next is technology as well as fund transfer. Gary can talk a little bit more about the fund transfer and you will see that come up in a little bit. This is tied to our textbooks.
Yes. The fund transfer is the state, that comes off the state budget. They have the amount that they give us as well as our local match. So that money is then transferred into textbook fund. And again, that's, that's number has just come straight off from the calc tool, so that's the reason you see the increase there. As far as the technology support, again, that's an ESER position that we're bringing into the budget. And then the increase in the classroom technology, that is due to the E-rate cost.
And so this gives you total operating expenses by function and the percent of the budget for our proposed FY '25 budget. And the next one is a, just a pie chart, highlighting the same information as far as the percentage of each function in the operating budget.
That was much bigger on my screen.
The next, 50 pages, Gary? 80 pages?
I think we said 81, but I can't remember.
The next however many pages is information, and again, this entire presentation will go up on our website as the superintendent's proposed budget for FY '25. Gary has taken some time to separate out basically information by school-
By school and department.
And by department.
Correct.
And so for the sake of everybody's time and sanity, we will not go through all of these individually, but I do think this is important information to have out, and it will be out for public consumption. Again, this breaks down by school and by department. So Laura, let's scroll. Keep on going. Way, it's getting way down.
Sure you don't want to go over all that?
Once you can. He's on a roll tonight.
Okay. And we're going to go to capital next, so it's the next slide. We are starting with a baseline of what we have been receiving over the last-
I believe Doug said 2013?
Which is an amount in, to the tune of $778,666, correct, Doug? And so, and thank you, first of all, thank you to Ms. Anderson and Ms. Harrington for your time in meeting with us multiple times about the budget, as well as Mr. Rickett and Ms. Anderson for meeting with us about CIP. And of course, we have five years' worth of CIP projects that we will have on the website for, again, for the sake of time and alignment with an FY '25 budget presentation. We will talk to you about proposed CIP for FY '25. And so this document essentially shows if we continue to receive the funding that we have for the last 11 years, how we would break that out. And so what Doug will do is essentially your, your roofing improvements and replacement cycle, that is money that Doug has, that he knows he's going to have to spend, particularly in emergency situations and things that come up unplanned through the year. Our projects that we want to complete in FY '25 include finishing the OES project as far as the, the remaining bit from the HVAC replacement, correct, Doug? And that is cabinets and sinks, and I believe that's in fifth grade, if I remember correctly. And we are also, thanks to performance contracting, finishing up Gordon Barber's HVAC replacement this summer. And we would want to make sure that we address those sinks and countertops as well in the main building. Completing two security vestibule entrances here at Teak in the front lobby as well as Head Start and setting aside $50,000 for other facility projects, exterior issues, flooring, ceilings, doors, any number of things that go wrong or need to be addressed during the course of a year. We are, we want to, and thank you all for approving this evening, the contract to complete the chiller and the drive for chiller number one at Locust Grove Middle School. We completed the R-newel for the drive of chiller number two, the second chiller at Locust Grove Middle in 2022. And we would really like to complete the R-newel on the chiller, so that way Locust Grove is completely finished as far as HVAC, R-newels, and extend the life of those units for up to 10 to 12 years. As far as outdoor facilities and grounds, at Porterfield Park, we want to address the apron and the ramp on the bleachers at Porterfield Park to make them ADA compliant, as well as finish a really nice paving job around the bleachers, behind the bleachers, through the gate, et cetera, to enhance our accessibility, our look, our cleanliness, as well as ADA compliance. We have two projects that we would be seeking additional funding for. One, after we complete all of the renovations at Gordon Barber, the last thing we want to do is leave the remaining modulators and houses up on that site to work around and create additional eye source. So we would like to demolish and get rid of all of those buildings to give a clean palette and a much better facility overall at Gordon Barber. And very much unfortunately, we have a pretty significant issue with our sewage treatment system at Unionville. And also unfortunately, we also have similar systems at Lightfoot as well as Locust Grove Primary and Elementary. And so we feel, we feel strongly that we absolutely have to begin immediately and replace the Unionville water, sewage treatment system. That is definitely headed towards, it is already a problem and we do not want it to become a major problem. And so that is where we would be seeking an additional $500,000 to address specifically those two projects. Does that cover it, Doug? Marshall? Gary?
That's it. We are coming here, but that's, that's covered good for-
Okay. Gary, would you like to talk about debt service here?
Sure. Debt services are, are contracts we enter into and the county provides the funding for those. Again, the, the performance contracts, we have all, we've been into those for more than, the contract, Performance Contract 3 was the latest one we did last year. But again, so we have been leasing buses annually. But one of the reasons you see an increase this year over last year is in FY '22. It was actually FY '21 into '22, we did not get a lease that year. We purchased them outright through some carryover funds from the county. So last year, there was only two bus leases on the debt service. So this year, there is a third. We're asking for another bus lease in FY '25. And again, just use the same dollar figures as last year, and again, talking to, we believe that's a good figure. So again, that's why you're seeing the increase in one year to the other, though, in the debt services. The big thing is the new lease this year. Again, these are just our other budgets. Again, if you guys have any questions, we don't normally spend a great deal of time on these, but again, be happy to answer any questions you have. But again, in our food service budget, we've got a $3.2 million on both the revenue and the expense side. Our textbook fund, textbook budget is the 772,261 that we showed earlier as a fund Our Head Start budget, I believe we've already approved that, but again, this is a dollar figure for those and what makes up those dollar figures. Our adult education budget, again, that's, again, just to make note, all the ones that I'm going through here quickly do not have local funding. These are, other than the match for the textbook. So again, that's, these are all state or federal funded. And so the adult education budget is the same way. It's either state or federal funded, and we have $465,000 in that budget. So again, next, I know we went quickly, but revenues for all funds, we are looking at $79,143,636 across all funds. The, probably the one to note on this one is the one that says county, and the county is $2,511,648,000. So that would be the ask from the county. And then the last one is just all expenses. And then the last one is just all expenses. So questions?
I don't have any questions. I would just like to thank the chair and Ms. Harrington. It's, most of the people don't understand the amount of time that goes in behind the scenes. I know the teachers and the people that are sitting in this audience right here understand because they're still sitting here a quarter to nine of the time that goes in to run this school system, this division, at this type of level. So I want to thank both of those, Dr. Hornick as well, and Gary especially for stretching. Really appreciate it. We ask a lot of you, so thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank you guys for preparing this. This is way more information than I know I've received in the last few years, so that's much appreciated. It really breaks it down. I know we've got some more work to do with it moving forward, but this is great work, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just ditto that. I know I've been pushing hard, and I appreciate all of the extra effort that you put into giving us a really comprehensive document that I feel like we can, we can work with. So thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. And everyone else.
I want to thank you also for being responsive to the concerns that have been brought forward, going to above and beyond to make sure that both the board and the community feels more comfortable. I know we still are going to be working with the process over this next year. And I know that you had not been asked to provide this level of detail and communication relative to the budget process or the, excuse me, numbers in the past. So again, thank you, thank you. Really appreciate it. I do have a couple quick questions.
Okay, all right. Hopefully I have answers.
Remind me about the re-benchmarking Hold Harmless and what that was relative to?
Actually, I have a printout of that because I've had a feeling this question was gonna come, so let's see if I can find it. Again, this is, I got this off of the State Finance and Appropriation Committee. It said the updates are technical cost adjustments to meet the standards of SOQ minimum staffing requirements. And related support service and prevailing cost updates derived from updating FY '22 to FY 2020, FY 2020 to FY 2022 based year local expenses. So again, they did this study, and they said, you're underfunding, so we're gonna, we're gonna, based on this biennium, we're gonna give the school divisions additional money. But that has not moved forward into the next biennium, which is our, the one we're currently in.
Thank you very much. Also, can you, can you talk to me a little bit about your ADM, your average daily membership and the numbers that are currently used for building the budget, and will that change at all?
Again, we do enrollment projection every year. And so, unfortunately, I don't have that with you guys. I can't tell you the exact number. But again, this is based off our average day of membership. What I use this year is what is on the governor's budget. Now again, some years, we will adjust that if we think it's too low or too high. But again, you have to be careful adjusting it too far because again, if you, if you say, okay, we think our ADM is 4924 instead of 4824, and it's not, then you, you've got to cover that gap in state funding where you incorrectly estimated, so...
So you budget conservatively on your revenue side and make sure that you use the governor's?
That is correct. But again, this, this is, this came straight off the governor's budget, so we felt, we felt comfortable with that number. So that is the number we used, yes.
Thank you.
Gary, if I could ask?
Again, one other thing I want to, that is adjusted throughout the year as well as what revenue we get. So what they do in January, they look at the ADM and reestimate it. So they'll adjust the amount of revenue we have coming in mid-year, and then they take the final March 31st number, and that's what we get for that year. So really, we don't know till March. We're still working off an estimate throughout that period of time.
So you're working off an estimate, and if there's actual growth, then you will get increased revenue?
That's correct.
If there is a decline enrollment situation, would you lose revenue?
Yes, we would. And again, so we, we're watching enrollments all throughout the year, so yes.
My question was, there were several spots in the presentation where you said this is due to thus and so.
Yes.
Do you have that in a form that we could reference it somewhere? Because when I go back through all these numbers and my head goes, what did, what did he said?
Well, it's, it's what we said in the beginning. So I mean, we could, I mean, I could make some notes on there, but the positions and the funds that we listed as our priorities and the dollar amounts, that's just where they reflected in that particular area. So yes, I mean, I could, I could do that, but again, yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm the problem child.
Yeah.
It would be helpful if you could add a column that just says, this is why this went up four percent. Or, I mean, I don't mean to add to your plate, but...
That's not a big deal. Again, and again, it wasn't a large number of them, as you could see as we was going through it.
Right, there are a few. But it would be helpful for me to know that. And our responsibility ultimately is to the taxpayers of Orange County. So I want to be able to understand and explain when I'm asked.
Yeah. I want you to be able to answer the question, Jess.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Gary.
So I'm the only one that didn't get to say thank you? Because everybody else has asked questions, but thank you very much.
Again, thank you guys for sitting in and listening and, you know, giving us the opportunity to kind of show you what we do and how we do it, so...
And again, of course, you know, with being on, being the committee, Madam Chair and Ms. Harrington have gotten more, right, because of the position. But we're happy between now and I think we have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday at five. Any other, individually, or we do two by two? So if we two boards are gonna come and meet with Gary and I, or if we want to talk CIP, we can bring Doug in as well. We'll be happy to do that at any point here over this week and into early next week as well. And of course, anytime after that, but just, you know, between now and when we have, you know, targeted to approve. I know that would be a high time, so please just let us know.
I also wanted to highlight the fact that those student support positions were included in this budget that were discussed this evening. And then additionally, with that email that we're gonna be sending out with the sheriff's MOU, would we be able to send an email out, you know, at the same time, letting them know that the budget has been prepared and a link to it, so that way the community has access to that and let them know about the meeting?
Hundred percent.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. And Madam Chair, that's all for recommendations this evening. Thank you.
So just moving forward, kind of stepping back to the budget. So as of right now, we are, we are scheduled for a special call meeting on Monday or Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, thank you.
And to start at?
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock.
Yes, okay.
Here, in this location.
Perfect. So is everybody aware of that? But yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, moving on. Board member comments. Is there any additional information that we have or any questions? If none, we will move to closed session certification.
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of Personnel or the Performance of a Division Employee as Authorized by Section 2.2-3711A I of the Code of Virginia for Resignation, Termination, Transfer, Employment, Salary Adjustment, and Retirement of Employees.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed session, thank you.
Thank you.
I move that the Board will reconvene in open session, at which time the following motion will be adopted. Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Freedom...
Sorry.
No, it's that one.
This is the N one.
She's, she's right, it's the certification first.
It's the certification.
Yep. Don't confuse me, Chairman Anderson.
It was a test.
It was a test, that's what it was. Does she have any idea?
I'm sorry.
All right, I think I was at the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia require certification by this school board, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
May I have a second?
Second.
All the, sorry, this one's roll call, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Miss Byron, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Dawson?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington?
Aye.
Ms. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Rickett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the vote as follows: Five yes votes, no no votes. The resolution is approved by a five to zero vote.
And Dr. Hornick, deposition of personnel actions?
Yes, ma'am, recommend approval of the personnel action agenda as presented in closed session.
You have a motion?
A motion to recommend approval of the personnel agenda to include resignation and employment of staff.
Second. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, if there is nothing else, I am adjourning this meeting. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.